Hello and welcome to this candidate forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. My name is Linda Dear. Our timekeeper is Suki Senet. We have three candidates competing for two seats on the Corte Madera Town Council. Each seat has a four-year term. The candidates are Jim Andrews, Sloane Bailey, Bob Ravazio. Each candidate has been invited to give a two-minute opening statement. We'll begin in alphabetical order with Jim Andrews.
Hello, my name is Jim Andrews and I'm running for Town Council in Corte Madera. I've lived in town for 25 years. I very much enjoy the town. I like the way various activities in the town are segregated into different areas. And if elected to Town Council, I'll work on strengthening the finances of the town, working on the zoning and the big project and development approval process so that we unpack zoning from design review, from the environmental review, so separate decisions can be debated individually as opposed to what's currently happening where all the decisions are sort of lumped up in one big furball and the town has to decide whether to accept it or to reject it. And that's basically it.
Thank you. Sloane?
Thank you. And thank you to the League of Women Voters. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Sloane Bailey and I've lived in Corte Madera since 1998. And I like what I'm doing now for the Town Council and I would like the opportunity to continue to do it because it's my opportunity to give back to the community that has supported me and my family for some time now. I was appointed two years ago and I served on the Planning Commission before that. My priorities for the upcoming term would be improvements to the budget. I think you'd find we all agree to that. The efficiency of the services, and that means both the process by which the government provides the services and the ease with which they're used, and access to the government. And by that I mean the communications and improvements in that regard. I think I have a useful background to the Town Council and I've tried to provide that to it. My experience on the Planning Commission has given me some understanding of the town's neighborhoods and how the systems work when people have applications for improvements to their houses and also when the larger applications come before it. On the Town Council for the last couple of years, I've had an opportunity to get to know how the council works in the many parts of government and the many parts of our community that the Town Council is involved in. I work in the private world as a settlement conference panelist and then a local attorney here in Marin County. I'm a trial attorney and I serve as a judge pro tem and as a judicial arbitrator for, volunteer my time I should say, for the local Marin Superior Court system. On behalf of the Town Council, I sit as liaison to the Flood Board, which helps connect the town to those resources which can best protect us in the event of a natural disaster such as that. I am the Town's representative to Marin Clean Energy, which is the clean energy provider of power to Marin and beyond. And I was recently elected the vice president of the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members, by which I have access and provide some utility because of the communications with our neighboring communities. I hope we get a chance to talk about it more later. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Hi, I'm Bob Ravazio. I've lived in town for 24 years and I've been deeply involved in the community while here. I've served on the Town Council for eight years and I see three major issues I want to work on. First, we're getting and will continue to get increased pressure for more commercial and residential development in town. We're a small town and I absolutely believe that if we want to remain a small town, we have that choice. That's why I led the town four years ago to leave A-Bag. That's why I voted last week to proactively extend the building moratorium on all development in the Tamil Vista corridor. My eight years have given me hard-won experience that I will use to ensure that the community's needs, traffic, parking, and aesthetics are met first before any project is approved anywhere in town. The second issue, as we've all been talking about, are finances. We're in a better position than we were four years ago, but we need to continue to manage spending carefully. My goal is to continue to search for ways to provide better service more efficiently and we have a golden opportunity right now, creating agreement with Larkspur to share fire services as we've done so successfully with police service. The third issue is how to create a more livable community. My goal is to improve bicycle and pedestrian access throughout the town, creating a more vibrant town, as well as helping to alleviate traffic. Building infrastructure that will help students safely bike and walk to school is one of the best ways to solve our local traffic issues. As excited as I am about what I want to accomplish, I'm equally proud of what we've been able to do. We successfully merged San and Salmo into the Central Marin Police Authority and the savings have been significant. We pay for police service what we paid in 2006, yet we have more officers on the street, lower crime rates, and faster response times. We're now investing in critical infrastructure that's been deferred for years. We renegotiated labor contracts and new employees now pay a fair share of their pension. And we created a vibrant new gathering place, Town Park Plaza and Cafe Verde, that's been embraced by everyone. I'm excited about the opportunity to continue the progress our town has made and I look forward to continuing it in the future.
Thank you. Now we'll begin the questions. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond. We'll rotate the order of questioning, beginning with Sloane Bailey. First question. How well do you think Corte Madera is prepared to prevent or fight fires? What role should the Town Council play in improving firefighting capabilities?
Okay, well, the town has an excellent fire department, first of all. So the Town Council's role in trying to help Corte Madera be ready for and prevent fires of any kind in the town is by providing the resources necessary by its fire department. One way that we're doing that right now is that I think they're funded in the way that they're supposed to be and we've recently approved as part of the capital budget the purchase of a new $500,000 fire engine. I think the latter companies or engine companies are three-person per truck and they have a unified system where they are sharing services to some extent with local communities as well, so that in the event of a true natural disaster, they'd be able to respond quickly. One thing that I think is very much in the forefront of any candidate's mind right now is whether we can improve those services by sharing our fire department services with neighboring communities such as Larkspur or Ross Valley, especially the emergency medical services component of it. There definitely would be a financial savings to some extent, but we need to protect our own community first. And I think like in any combined venture like that, we have to be cautious about how it can be done. But as Bob correctly points out, the police have shown it can be done and if done correctly, provides a savings in money as well as an improvement in services. So the best way, to my own mind, that we can continue to protect Corte Madera's life and safety issues through the fire department is not just by continued funding the existing system, which I think is working reasonably well, but by seeing if we can't share it with our neighboring communities. Thank you.
Bob?
Yes, I think the primary role the council can serve is first off is to make sure that the fire department is adequately funded, which I think we have done. It is in fact the largest item on our budget. We spend over $5 million a year on fire. I think the second thing we can do is ensure that we have the appropriate leadership in place, which again, I think we have successfully done. Our fire chief has been widely talked about as one of the most rigorous in terms of training and makes sure that our fire department is extremely well-trained and that they stay on top of maintaining engines, maintaining service, all those sorts of things. But I think what we can do in the future is make that even better and share services, as I mentioned earlier, beginning with Larkspur, much like we've done in police. And before we enter into any agreement, I think the standard should be the same that it was when we entered into an agreement with the police, which was that we would only go forward if we could provide better service and do so more efficiently. And we demonstrated that we were able to do that successfully in police. I think we have the same opportunity in fire because of our proximity to Larkspur. There's opportunities obviously to combine the departments, share services, be more efficient on the trucks, and provide even faster response times than we've been able to. Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, I agree with both Bob and Sloane that our fire department is very good and it will be the first responders to any fire. We do need to look at how to consolidate at least the administrative portion of the fire department. Other than that, I agree with Bob and Sloane on most of what they've said. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. What lessons have been learned from the Wincup experience? How will this controversial development effort affect future decisions? And we'll begin with Bob.
There's a lot of lessons that have been learned from the Wincup experience. And as I said to somebody last week, if we hadn't done anything after that, we should all be thrown out of office. But in fact, we've done a lot. The first thing we did, and this happened before anybody even knew much about Wincup, was we withdrew from A-Bag. And that had the immediate effect of reducing our housing allocation and the sustainable community strategy from 770 to 220 units, which is a long-term number. And it reduced our RENA number from 101 to 79 units. But we have also completely turned over the planning department. We have a new planning director, a new assistant planning director. We've completely turned over the Planning Commission. We have five new commissioners, including we make sure we have an architect on there. We've got a couple of people with building experiences. We have established new processes in planning so that now, rather than have the first public hearing be when the application is actually being reviewed, we have what's now called an information session. So the town has the opportunity to view the entire project, see it, comment, and the applicant has the opportunity to hear what the town has to say about it. We have also just replaced the town attorney so that we can get better legal advice, especially as it relates to land use policy. If you look at the way we approved our most recent housing element, it was a long and difficult process, but it was very public and I think we were able to get our housing element approved with almost no buffer units. Most of the other municipalities in Marin County have done that. So we're really very carefully managing that. And finally, and most significantly, when we were told that the theater had been purchased, even though there was no application, and the town proactively put a moratorium in place on the whole Tamil Vista corridor to slow things down and make sure we understand exactly what's happening there before anything gets done. Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, I guess the only way I could analyze what happened with Wincup is the town allowed itself to be set up and it was set up. And we've recently gone through the response to the civil grand jury, which I think was a useful exercise. I agree that the council has taken some corrective action, replacing the planning staff, replacing the town attorney. Now we just have to follow up on it. One thing the Town Council could do is give guidance to town staff that we like our housing element the way it is, we like our zoning ordinances the way they are, and when developers come in and say, "Okay, rewrite your zoning ordinance to fit my project," just sort of make it the default setting that we've already got the policies in place, we're going to enforce them. And that's the chief thing. Also, we need to review the approval for the zoning, approving Wincup, and whether or not we're going to actually issue them an occupancy permit. In particular, I'm concerned about the various balconies and how they were constructed, whether they were properly waterproofed. And if you look at what happened over in Berkeley where they had wooden supports, inadequate waterproofing, we really don't want that in our town.
Sloane? Thank you. Okay, well, first, when talking about Wincup, the first sort of brutally obvious point, I think, to anybody is that our town is largely built out. It's not easy to put any new development of any kind anywhere. And some of the things that, some of the ways that I think it's important to look at is on a moving-forward basis, what can or has the town done to improve the situation so that we don't have another situation similar to what we just experienced with Wincup. And Bob and Jim have both pointed out that first step in that is the moratorium. You know, the Civil Grand Jury report that came out mentioned that although the town didn't do anything wrong, there were lots of things we could have done better. And one of those in the forefront is communication. I think that that's something important. We have some other forces that have made a Wincup-type development less likely now. Our RENA numbers have been reduced. We have replaced, as others have pointed out, the Planning Commission has excellent people on it. Our town attorney's been replaced. Our planning director has been changed. One of the things pointed out in the Civil Grand Jury report, which is a good one, is to be very careful that there be a project-specific environmental impact report for any project of significant environmental impact. I think that would have been a useful tool, which could have and should have been used. But finally, and most importantly, is the community outreach. My own observation and my own experience, both in personal life and the town service, has been that that interaction between the decision-makers and the town and the town citizens itself is the single most important part of the governance. And although it can be difficult or trying sometimes to find the best way to do it, I think the community outreach by way of televising the meetings and social media is the best way to go about that. And that's the way I think we should move forward.
Thank you. In a related question, the public dialogue regarding future growth in Marin County has become divisive and counterproductive. How would you change the nature of this discourse? And we'll begin with Jim.
Basically, you have to be open and willing to listen to all people. I know in minor actions with the existing Town Council, they've been very professional, very responsible, even if we disagreed on something, they were open to conversation and dialogue. That's the key thing we have to do. But also be very honest with people that, you know, this is where I am coming from. I don't want to see high-density growth in my town, in the county. And yes, we can discuss it, but we might end up having to agree to disagree. And one issue, or there's a perception in town that we're unable to say no to large developers. I don't believe that's true, but we need to be much more, make it much more apparent to people that we won't just bend over for any large developer who comes into town who wants to do anything. And we have gotten much better than that, but we need to continue to be able to say, "No, we don't want this, or we don't want this the way you've configured it." So that's it. Thank you.
Sloane?
Thank you. If the question is how to cure the Marin County divisiveness in land use and other decisions, it's difficult to answer that in the next minute and a half. I'll suggest two basic plans, though. One of them is to the process by which it happens, and secondly, the substance. Maybe a plan's not the best word because it's hard to be specific since the circumstances are so very different. So the process, I think, since the actual underlying differences may not be easily solved, the first one, a process, means that there has to be a fair hearing and there has to be plenty of notice. So regardless of the decision, whether it be a land use project or anything else, there has to be an increased opportunity for people to participate in that process and also that they know about the processes even happening, as well as what is the issues that are going to be debated. And then the second one is what I think really, that's the easy one. The second one's the hard one, which is the substance. And there are two things I would encourage here. The first one that's been revealed to me in the court cases that I've handled and the many cases that I've worked on as a mediator and others, is that when you get deep enough into the facts of the matter, the solution often reveals itself. It's often that the true angst associated or the anger in the difference of opinions relates more from an emotional view of what they believe to be the problem, rather than a sort of deep understanding of what the problems are. We are a single unified community and we all live next to each other. And I believe that for the most part, when the actual facts and the results or consequences are explained clearly, that helps understand what a reasonable solution, a practical, pragmatic solution would be. And finally, communicating those possible options in a straightforward way, both what your decision-making is and how you got there, is the final substantive part. Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, that is a very difficult one to answer in a minute and a half. Could do a whole seminar on that. But I think, I guess a couple of things. First off, very similar to what Jim and Sloane have said, anytime anything comes up in the future, I think we have to make sure that we have terrific outreach to people to make sure that they understand and they know about it well in advance, so that they have an opportunity to look at the project or whatever it may be and understand it. And then we give them appropriate forums and time to comment on that. And that means having plenty of public hearings. That's why I think our information sessions that we're starting to do with the Planning Commission make a lot of sense, so that the more time people have to, I think, talk and be heard and hear both sides of the story, I think that really helps eliminate the divisiveness. Secondly, I think is just really good plain communication from our planning department. A lot of these issues are incredibly technical and incredibly complex. When you get into environmental impact reports and negative declarations and all these sorts of things, it gets very confusing and we need to make sure that people understand exactly what is being done, what is being talked about, and more importantly, what it means, because the language is so arcane sometimes that it's very, very tough to understand. I have a tough time with it and I've been dealing with it for eight years. And finally, I think we should be focusing on, you know, anything, especially as it relates to housing, the kinds of things we need to find things we can all agree on. For example, one I think would be senior housing. I think we need more housing specifically set aside for senior citizens. There's a lot of people in our community who want to stay in the community, but they don't want to be in a big house, but they need a place to go and we don't have those. And I think those are the kinds of things that we can all agree on and try to find common ground on. Thank you.
Thank you. Corte Madera has low-lying land that floods easily. Has anything been done to protect the town from floods and what else needs to be done? And we'll begin with Sloane.
Thank you. So flood control problems in Corte Madera are both wrapped up in local issues and problems and, secondly, part of a larger sort of climate change issue that is affecting, you know, the entire world, but in particular, any low-lying community. So I'm not sure how useful it is to go on at length about larger, big-picture issues, although I believe strongly we need to do something to be helpful in that regard, but to focus instead on the immediate way to protect our citizens. So we have levees that are degrading around the town of Corte Madera and there are, you know, wetlands nearby which will help defray in the event of a true flood event, but those levees need to be improved, which is an expensive and time-consuming project. It appears on the current capital improvements budget for the town of Corte Madera. Secondly, the low-lying areas, especially in east Corte Madera, can have an improved drainage system. The floodgates and the pumps out there can be improved as well. I know that on King Tides and during the rainy season, which we all hope and pray will come this next year, they can regularly still suffer flooding. And that's something that we need to spend every dollar of our flood tax monies to try to help correct and secure. We do have a very good flood control system in Corte Madera right now that was designed by our current town manager years ago as part of a massive flood control project. We have a couple of canals and larger floodgates and system which helps, which does help the town in that regard. And I think that the best thing that we can do is to continue to prioritize our budget monies for this very real disaster, which we know it's not if it's going to happen, but when. Thank you.
Bob?
My first session on flood control was right after I got into the council and I sat through the presentation at the end of it. I said, "My goodness, we're just like Holland, aren't we?" And the town manager said, "Yeah, pretty much." And people just don't realize it. We have, one-third of the town is in a floodplain and we have actually a very, very sophisticated flood control system of canals and levees and pumps that to date has worked very, very well. And a lot of that came after, I think, the bond measure for that was in the early '90s and it's been successful in really upgrading the system. So it's working well. But going forward, one of the things we have been lax on as the town budget has been stressed is we haven't been upgrading all the pumps and we haven't been putting in everything that we need to be doing. So we need to figure out a way to get money out of the budget to continue to upgrade and continue to maintain the system, because while it has successfully worked, the stresses on it are only going to get larger. And we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to continue to improve it and upgrade it and protect our residents as well as our businesses, because a lot of those are in the floodplain as well. And I think finally, we all need to be supportive of efforts both locally, nationally, and globally to reduce greenhouse gases. We are on the bay. A lot of our housing is on the bay. And as sea levels rise, this problem is only going to get more difficult to control. Thank you.
Jim?
Well, I agree that we have a very good flood control system. I hope it's perfect. It probably isn't, but we do need to continue to invest to maintain our flood control system. One thing we could also look at in terms of zoning and remodels and so on is houses in areas subject to flooding, encourage them to be built up if they're going to be major renovations. And if someone wants to put in a two-story house and by raising it 18 inches or 24 inches, raising the foundation, if that requires a zoning variance, be forgiving in terms of approvals for that. That's, you know, that's about it. I just remember looking at the canal after several rainstorms and wondering, "Oh, hope it doesn't come over the bank, because that's my backyard." You know? So...
Thank you. Please provide your thoughts on funding the city's pension and other post-employment benefits. Do you see a need to change the negotiating process or transparency guidelines for future contract talks? And we'll begin with Bob.
So first, yes, first off, in terms of pension benefits, we have just this year our OPEB, Other Pension Employee Benefits. We began paying that down. We made a $500,000 payment and we have a plan to continue that into the foreseeable future. And what that will do over time is eventually bring that liability down. It's a long-term plan, but we have made the commitment. It's big, but we are doing that. And actually, I saw a memo recently from the Town Treasurer. We may be considering making an additional payment later this year to bring that down even further. So that's an important thing, that we understand the priority on that and we are trying to make sure that happens, because the last thing we want to do is leave that kind of liability around for our kids to take care of. In terms of negotiating, we have been, I think, doing a very good job on that. We have been open. We use an outside negotiator. We actually use many elements of the COIN system, which has been recommended to us by the grand jury. We haven't gone entirely to the system because there are some court cases out there right now that still need to be resolved, that were brought by labor unions. And I think until that resolution is done, I don't think we're actually going to consider doing that. But one of the things we have also done, I think, successfully with all of our labor groups in the past several years, is we've negotiated agreements so that the new employees that come in are paying their portion of the retirement benefits. And that system will be sustainable, I think, well into the future. And we have also reduced their medical benefits long-term. They used to have medical benefits for the entire family. Now, long-term, after retirement, they have single-payer Kaiser equivalent for health care. And we think that's a model that's going to be much more sustainable in the future. Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, we basically, if you look at the current budgeted pension deficit, it assumes a 7.5% rate of return. If you use a lower rate of return, instead of being unfunded $30 million, it's closer to $47 million. So we do need to start paying that down. One way we could do it is when actually budgeting for the year, I'm getting the impression that they sort of look at the last year's tax revenue, whether it's sales tax, hotel tax, whatever, and just sort of extend it out one year, you know, going forward. But most of our revenue is variable, except for the property tax. So perhaps what we should start doing is taking a lower number for variable things, sort of what's the average over the last two or three years and use that. And then that effect would be, at the end of the year, we'd have money we could either put into a reserve fund, money that would be available. We could, you know, pay cash for new pumps for the flood zone, or alternately, just pay down the various liabilities the town has. One thing we do have is, originally it was $10 million, now I think it's down closer to $8 million of liability for the Park Madera project. And with that one, we have basically mortgaged our fire stations, our town hall, most of the physical plant in town for that bond. So I would seriously concentrate on paying that one down first. The interest rate on that's between 5 and 6 percent, so you could save some money for the town by paying that off sooner rather than later.
Sloane?
Thank you. So this is a good question, an important question. Standard and Poor's recently issued a report that increased the town's bond rating from $100,000 to $150,000. a BBB+ to an A-, and it pointed out two things that would help the town improve its bond rating even further. And it discussed at some length the other post-employment benefit liabilities as being a significant component of what needs to be addressed in order to go up to the next level. And the Standard and Poor's recommended a long-term financial plan for Corder Madera and a long-term capital plan. But the long-term capital improvements plan is something that we're actually debating at some length in the town council right now, in how to spend both the sales tax money for capital improvements, like the fire engine and flood improvements and other things. I think that will go a long ways towards reassuring, you know, financial services organizations that we're on the right path. But then the second one is a long-term financial plan. This is, goes to the heart of one of the reasons why I'd like to be elected to the position, is because I think that it is something that the town doesn't have and that it needs, which is a 10-year, 20-year plan whereby the sort of long-term debt obligations, including Park Madera Center and the OPEB liability, the other post-employment benefit liability, and other major expenses can be addressed. I think that we don't want to mortgage our children or our children's children's future, and the way to do that is to set up a plan right now, even if it's only an incremental payoff year by year, but by which at some certain definite point in the future, a deadline, it will be paid off. And step number one of that is a long-term financial plan. Thank you.
What suggestions do you have for providing services to a growing population that is 60 and over? And we'll begin with Jim.
We currently provide services, I believe, through the Parks Department. I guess I would continue to provide that. I have to confess, I have not thought about it, even though I'm now approaching that age. So I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. Corder Madera was recently designated an age-friendly community, and received that recognition in large part because of the dedicated efforts of our mayor, Carla Condon, and others who have been striving to do this, which is a way of including, as a part of a long-term, a long-range planning in the town, communities which have safe pathways to walk and reduced housing costs and reasonable accommodations, both in the actual places they live and the quality of life that people are, older citizens enjoy. So the short of it is, if the question is, "What can we do to improve that quality of life and fact of life for our older citizens?", part of it is to follow the long-range planning that's submitted by, as part of our age-friendly Corder Madera, and to do those things which we've now committed to do, which is to follow that path. In other words, not just talk the talk, but begin to walk down it. So community programs with our community center, which are designed for our older citizens, and provide the town as a resource by which our older citizens can get information about alternatives and options available to them. Thank you.
Yes, I think the most important thing, from what I've heard, is we need to make sure that we are providing ways to allow seniors to age in place and age in the community. And there's a number of things we can do to do that, to make their lives easier and more pleasant. One thing that has come up that we're starting to make some progress on is better pedestrian access. And that means simple things, like maintaining sidewalks properly and making sure that residents don't let tree roots have, you know, large gaps in the sidewalk that need to be fixed. It means making sure the curb cuts are in place. It means making sure the paths are maintained. It means making sure that they're well lit. The crosswalk times are adequate for people to cross the street, so that people are able to move and get around town. The second part that comes to mind is helping people stay in the community. There are, a lot of our older residents, you know, want to stay here, but they don't necessarily want to be staying in the large house that they may be living in sometimes by themselves. One of the things we just did in the housing element to hopefully make that process easier is we've created something called junior second units, meaning that they can set aside a part of the house as a second unit for someone to move into if they want to. And that does two things. First off, it gives them someone else living in the house if they want, if they happen to be living there alone. But it also provides revenue for them to help them continue to pay for upkeep on the house. I think that's important. And then, as I mentioned earlier, I think we should be looking for opportunities to create age-restricted housing. Larkspur put some in last year, although it was very, very expensive. But housing that is set aside strictly for people 55-plus, so that if they do want to stay in the community, they have a place where they can move into, stay with their old friends, stay with their old restaurants, stay with their, you know, whatever clubs they're participating in. Thank you.
Thank you. This is going to be the last question. So is there a question we should have asked but didn't? And we'll start with Sloan.
I think the question I would ask was implied by the opening statements, but it's the most important one, which is, "Why do you want to be on the town council?" It's hard for me to imagine how anybody can serve in this role, much of which is, comes at you without a desire to do so, so that you can go after it in a more affirmative way. I think my own observation has been that it's very difficult to anticipate all, although you can anticipate many, of the sorts of problems that will be confronted to you. So to me, it's really important to pick someone whose judgment you trust and who will be able to respond in the uncertain situation in a way which gives you some confidence or looking after the best interests of the citizens of Corder Madera. I love my town, I know we all do. And it's the sort of thing where I really want to do it. I like it. I like being on the town council. I think I'm helpful, and I think I have the right background. The reason why I want to do it, I think, is an internal thing taught from years, as many of us have the upbringing from our parents, who I admire greatly, that it's important to serve and to give back. The question I would ask, that I don't think was asked directly, but hopefully it's solicited by the opening or closing statements, is, "Do you, why do you want to do it? Why do you have a passion to do it?" And my own hope is to make it a better place for my children and their children. Thank you.
Bob?
God, that was a great answer. And I have to tell you, I would agree with you. I think that is the question, yeah, that's what I think you should ask, is, "Why do you want to do this?" Because having now done it for a long time, I have to tell you, personally, I struggled very hard with my decision to try to do this for four more years, because it is an incredibly significant time commitment. Our last two meetings almost went to midnight. It is intellectually very difficult. You are constantly learning new things, and you're forced to read very long documents if you want to understand them properly. So it requires a tremendous commitment, and you need to really want to do it. And for me personally, it came down to, first off, there's things that I've started that I want to finish, that I think I have the ability to finish, and we've talked about a lot of those so far today. But it's also because I feel that I owe the town something. You know, we were very fortunate. We met a lot of people when we first moved here, and I learned that Corder Madera is the way it is because people got involved and people cared, and they got onto the town council, they got onto the beautification committee, they got onto all these various things that make this town such a wonderful place. You know, we have more volunteers, I think, in Corder Madera for everything than just about anything, any town, I think, in Marin County. We have an active Lions Club, we have an active Women's Club, we have an active beautification committee. And that involvement is what makes the community great. And I feel like this can be my contribution to try to help move this community forward and continue to make it a great place to live, is by devoting and volunteering my time over the next four years on the town council. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I agree with both Bob and Sloan. I guess when I started considering running for town council, it was, I thought about, "Where do I want the town to be in 20 years? And is there a way I can help the town get there?" And being on council would be an opportunity to do that. My background is in finance and accounting, so I'm very comfortable with budgets, and I realize that our town had a very bad experience in 2008, and we've been recovering from it ever since. And the way you recover from it is you sort of have to keep pushing at it, you know, day by day, budget period by budget period, and it's no one quick solution. In terms of how I would like to see the town in 20 years, I'd like to see the town financially solvent. I like the way it is currently laid out with various areas or zones where different activities occur, and they support one another. But it is a very, it is a small town with a diverse housing stock, building stock, retail and commercial activities. And I'd like to maintain that while allowing it to develop and evolve, so that it's a vital and livable place in 20 years. That's it. Thank you.
That ends the question portion of the debate. Before the candidates make their closing statements, we want to give you some important dates. Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd. If you wish to register or have moved since the last time you voted and wish to reregister, the deadline is Monday, October 19th. Requests for vote-by-mail ballots must be received by the registrar of voters no later than Tuesday, October 27th. Early voting begins on Monday, October 5th at Civic Center in room 121. Polls open at 8:00 and close at 4:30. For more election-related information, you may visit the league's smartvoter.org website. You can watch these debates on our local website, marinlwv.org, or Community Access Television at cmcm.tv. Now, each candidate will have one and a half minutes for a closing statement. We'll start with Bob.
Thank you. I love living in Corder Madera. My wife and I raised our three daughters here after moving here from the Midwest. And we love it because it's a place where everybody knows everybody else. And that's a really rare and valuable thing right now in this country. People in this town care. They care about the town, they care about their neighbors, they care about the schools. And the time I've spent on the council has been just terrific. It's been energizing, it's been exciting, it's been rewarding, it's been intellectually challenging and stimulating, and we've gotten a great deal accomplished. We're on the right financial track, infrastructure's in good shape, the path forward, I think, is clear, but there's a lot more that needs to be done. We need to make sure that we're on a much slower path of growth, and I think that reflects the will of the community. If I'm elected, I'll use my experience that I've gained over the last eight years to ensure that no development project gets approved unless it fits with the community's needs and all the impacts are fully addressed. If I'm elected, I'll manage our budget frugally, and I'll continue to search for ways to share services with other jurisdictions and save money. If I'm elected, I'll continue working with all community sectors and the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth, of which I'm the co-chair, to protect our young people and change cultural norms to reduce underage alcohol and drug use. And if I'm elected, I'll continue to search for ways to make this a more sustainable community, get more people on bikes and on foot and out of their cars. Thank you for taking the time to watch this, and I hope that I have your vote on November 3rd.
Jim?
Yes, if elected, I will concentrate on the budget, also on the zoning and building approval process. In particular, what I'm, what I would like to see happen is that it continue to be relatively simple to upgrade existing housing, single-family housing stock, but also large developments get very careful scrutiny, and that there's a lot of opportunity for public participation and review of that, those projects. And then I just hope the town continues to grow and evolve, and is the pleasant place it currently is to live. And so hopefully, I will be able to foster that.
Sloan?
Thank you. Yeah, my wife and I are raising our three children in Corder Madera, and we love the town. And I promise to commit openly and honestly all decision-making in a way that is intended purely and without hesitation for the benefit of the citizens. There is no agenda that I don't think shouldn't be aired in a public meeting, there is no decision-making whose processes can't be aired, other than possibly during the negotiation process. I think that virtually every decision we take needs to be a product of informed citizen consent. I would encourage anybody who has any questions about anything to email me directly at, my email address is sloancbailey@yahoo.com. So it's my full name with my middle initial C. I think it's hard to communicate in the next minute and 12 seconds, all the reasons why I would like you to vote for me. But as a basic rule of thumb, I'd like to continue improvements to our town's financial strength by a long-term financial plan and a long-term capital improvements plan, both of which are currently being worked on. To improve the services, you know, there's an emergency responses, our fire department, our flood control work, and on the Planning Commission. And finally, the access to the government, the means with which the government communicates what's happening, and the citizenry can communicate why it wants to be, or what it would like to have happen, and in what manner. Including, among other things, social, not just social media, but outreach to the community in every form that it can, including hopefully televised town meetings. And those are the reasons why I would hope that you vote for me. Please do. Thank you.
That ends this candidate forum. Thank you again to the candidates and to our timekeeper, Suki Senet. And thank you for watching.